Um, so I-
Recording in progress.
Okay, so we have one item on the agenda this evening. It's a public hearing and it's transition to district-based elections for council members, public hearing number two. And kicking our staff's presentation off is our city manager, Drew Corbett. Sorry, yours, Drew.
Thank you. Let me just transition this to the slideshow and I'll get started. Okay, is everyone able to see that?
Yes, it looks great.
All right, thank you very much. So, good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and members of the city council. I'm Drew Corbett, city manager. Along with me tonight are city attorney Prasanna Rosaya, as well as Paul Mitchell from Redistricting Partners. And as Mayor Rodriguez just mentioned, this is the second public hearing on our transition to district elections. So just by way of background, in May, council did receive a demand letter alleging that our current at-large election system violates the California Voting Rights Act. So in June, council adopted a resolution of intent to transition to by-district elections. In July, council approved a transition schedule with the goal to complete the process by November 15th of 2021. And last month, late last month, council hosted the first of five public hearings on the process. And so should we continue to progress on this? As expected, the first by-district city council elections would be in November of 2022, which is our next regular election. So we have been holding virtual hearings, our public hearings virtually, excuse me. This is our second one. This one is going to be very similar to the first public hearing that was held on August the 23rd. Tonight, we'll be getting input from communities of interest. There won't be any maps drawing just yet. That will occur after this public hearing. And we'll also be looking to get direction from council on our district composition. The third public hearing, which will be at the end of this month, on September the 30th, will be to review and get feedback of proposed draft maps and election sequencing. The fourth public hearing, which is scheduled for October the 14th, will be to review and get final direction on the revised draft map and election sequencing. And the fifth public hearing, which will be on November the 1st, will be the introduction of an ordinance. And at that point, there'll be no further map changes. And then should that all go according to plan, on the 15th of November, on the consent calendar, we would have the adoption of an ordinance to move to by-district elections. We've been holding in-person community workshops for this process. We've held two so far. Both of them were to get input on the communities of interest. They were held on the same day, on August 21st. One was at the main library in the Oak Room. And the second one, which was hosted in Spanish, was at the King Center. We have three more community workshops. All of them will be to gather input on the maps that have been drawn or that will be drawn, excuse me. The next community workshop is scheduled for September the 25th at 2:00 PM at the main library. And then on October 2nd, we'll be holding two community workshops. One will be hosted in Spanish at 9:30 AM at the Congregational Church. And the other one will be held at 1:00 PM at the Senior Center. In terms of outreach and engagement, we do have a very robust outreach and engagement process going on. There is a special website dedicated to this process at www.cityofsanmateo.org/districtelections. And this is overall a multilingual campaign with both digital and print materials. I did want to provide some updates since the last public hearing, when we did get council feedback on our outreach and engagement processes. Our pop-ups are continuing at events, including the chili cook-off and the Friday night movies in the park. We've got a print insert that's going out in an upcoming recology bill. We've got emails out to registered voters in English, Spanish, and Chinese. We've done outreach at the Congregational Church during a Spanish-speaking service. We're planning pop-ups outside Meirancho. We're contracting with PCRC for direct outreach to underserved communities. And we've been collaborating with PAL and King Center staff on direct outreach to those families. We've also done ambassador trainings with neighborhood representatives and board and commission members, so they can also assist us with the outreach. In terms of composition and number of districts, this is something we went through at the first public hearing, and we're going to go through it in a little more detail tonight. State law does allow council to consider several options with respect to by-district elections. We could do by-distrikes in five, seven, or nine districts. Or we could do by-distrikes in four, six, or eight districts with an elective mayor that would serve either a two-year or a four-year term. So the number of districts and the election sequencing will be incorporated into an ordinance that would be considered by council for adoption. With that said, an election system that involves more than five council seats and/or an elective mayor would require an amendment to the city charter. And to go through the options with respect to amending this, potentially amending the city charter, I'm going to turn things over to our city attorney, Prasanna Rosaya.
Thank you very much, Drew. So there are several options here for the council. The option that's on the slide is the simplest option in that it would not involve a charter amendment as a prerequisite to implementation. So option A would be five council seats, by districts, with rotational mayor. And under this option, the council can approve the ordinance providing for those five seats by district and, like the current process, provide for a rotational mayor starting in November of 2022. And again, that can be presented, or can be implemented, I should say, without a charter amendment. Although a charter amendment could be presented to the voters later as a cleanup measure. Next slide, please. So these next two options would involve a charter amendment. So option B would be increasing the number of council seats from five to either seven or nine and/or including an elective mayor, which would involve either four, six, or eight seats. And that would be implemented no sooner than November 2024. And in the meantime, in order to comply with the CBRA, the council could decide to adopt a five-district election system with a rotational mayor as an interim step. So now that's a little complicated, so let me kind of break that down a little bit. So the advantage of that would be, would allow for enough time for voter approval of a charter amendment and coordination with the county. Remember, the county requires a fair amount of lead time prior to implementation. The drawback is that it could be disruptive and potentially confusing to the public and council candidates to move to two different election systems, one and then the other, in a short span of time. Now, having said that, a ordinance could provide for a so-called backup option in which the primary option would be, for example, increasing the number of council seats contingent upon a charter amendment passing. But then, if their charter amendment did not pass, the ordinance could include a backup option that was not dependent on a charter amendment. Now, it would be unusual, but, and state law doesn't explicitly provide for this option, but it doesn't prohibit it either. So it would require carefully crafting an ordinance to provide for those two different options. Next slide, please. So then, option C would be increasing the number of council seats and/or moving to an elective mayor starting in November 2024, but keep the current at-large system for November 2022. So on the one hand, that approach would allow for plenty of time for a charter amendment to be passed and then implemented. But it would also significantly delay implementation in accordance of, or compliance, I should say, with the CBRA. And therefore, this option has the most legal risk. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the city manager.
Thank you, Prasanna. And I think at this point, we will turn things over to Paul Mitchell with Redistricting Partners, and he will go through his presentation.
Thank you very much. Let me go ahead and share my screen. And this might be a little unorthodox, but I'm going to be going through this presentation. And I might have to have Chris take over halfway through my presentation and have him complete, because I have to do an interview at 6:30. So I'm going to go through, if that's okay, and get rolling. And if Chris has to come in and take over halfway through, I'll have him finish that up, if that's okay. So what we're going to cover is, let's see if that is sharing yet. Can you see it yet? Yeah.
Now we can.
Thanks. So what we're going to be covering is the California Voting Rights Act, redistricting and redistricting, the Fair Maps Act, because this is a law that deals with cities. And so kind of a best practice to make sure that we're complying with both the Fair Maps Act and the California Voting Rights Act. And then how the public's participating already, and then go over the schedule. So the California Voting Rights Act, as you know, is a law that prohibits the use of at-large election systems in cases of an agency having underlying racially polarized voting. At-large election systems are defined as any system that isn't a single-member district in which only the voters of that area elect somebody who lives in that area. And racially polarized voting is defined as differences in voting patterns that can be measured, where those voting pattern differences can be attributed to race or ethnicity, national origin, or other protected classes. There are a couple differences in California Voting Rights Act versus Federal Voting Rights Act. And one of the main ones is the California Voting Rights Act really hones in on this issue of the election structure. And it utilizes a threshold for violation that's a lot lower than federal law. So under federal law, you'd have to have the ability to create majority-minority districts, and you'd have to be able to prove that those districts can be effective and all these other tests before you might be required to go to districted election systems. And historically, cases under federal law in this area of forcing agencies to convert are not either timely or even successful. So the California Voting Rights Act was adopted in order to try to address these issues. Agencies that utilize the safe harbor provisions of the California Voting Rights Act can get out of this jeopardy and convert election system in a much easier way than they used to have to. And it potentially, it reduces any potential fees associated with the redistricting process. The districts, when you draw them, affect certain things. It affects who can run for what office and who their voters are. But it doesn't have to affect how the city manages itself. That is a decision that comes down to the city council. And if it wants to govern itself still with a lens towards the entire citywide interests, that's great. You know, it really is kind of a cultural thing at that point as to how the agency is run. Creation of districts doesn't mean that you have to change the way that you view your roles as council members. There's traditional principles used in redistricting that are meant to try to ensure that redistricting is fair. I'm going to go through a number of these, and either I or Chris will be able to answer some questions on these. The first is that districts be equal size. So that doesn't mean like a congressional district perfectly equal size, but relatively equal size. And generally, for a redistricting for a city, it's the idea that the largest district is no more than 10% bigger than the smallest district. Districts need to be contiguous, meaning they need to be whole parts. A area that, let's say, won't be your circumstance, but let's say you had, you know, an area that was, you know, far away from like Treasure Island, you know, a distant island or Catalina Island. Those can be functionally contiguous to you based on how people get there. And there's also sometimes cases where even within a city that has a contiguous landmass, that there might be one part of the city that you really can't get to from other places. So when we talk about contiguity, it won't be as literal always as, you know, are these places touching on a map? It might also have to do with if they are, if you're trying to connect two areas, whether or not those actually are areas that are connected the way people live, not just from a satellite photo. Districts need to be compact, which shouldn't be confused with small. District compactness is really a shape thing, and I've got some great examples of this. But the state law actually is different than a lot of what you see in federal law. In federal law, compactnesses use, they use these scores that are essentially mathematical scoring of the ratios between the area of a district and a circle of the same volume and other kinds of like real mathy things that you can use to determine what is compact. We even worked in one state in New Mexico where the state constitution forbids funny shapes, which is, I guess, up to everybody's own interpretation. In California, we have a definition which I can say it a million times, but every time I say it, it's kind of word salad. And, but after you hear it a couple of times, it makes sense. And that is, a district is compact if it's not bypassing nearby populated areas to get faraway populated areas. So if I were just to use my Zoom window, that would mean that if I had a district that started over here, it would be paired up with maybe an area here or an area here. It wouldn't be paired up with an area over here connected by squiggly lines or going around or anything like that. Its idea is to keep areas that are nearby together and keep areas that are apart into different districts. These are two examples of districts that were drawn pre-Fair Maps Act and before this definition that probably wouldn't be mathematically compact. They probably don't pass the funny shape test. But they also don't pass the test under state law. This red district has a population center over here in the, on the western side, northwestern side of the city. And then it has a golf course, a freeway, another community, and then more communities over here. If we were actually drawing this district, what would probably be seen as compact is having the areas here be in one district rather than having the areas here connected via this very narrow passageway to some other faraway population. So that would not be considered compact. This is another city, again, with a population area, and then another population area, and a very narrow diving and dodging connection between these two to bridge a too-far-away area. So they're bypassing all these nearby populations to get to a faraway population. So those are the kinds of maps you don't want to see in your redistricting. Maintaining communities of interest is central to the process, and that's why we do this in the public, is to ensure that the community is the one that's having their districts drawn to their interests rather than having it be done for some other outside political interests. So maintaining communities of interest is really key. There are, sometimes people conflate communities of interest and then those Voting Rights Act communities that are protected. So there are differences there. A community like Latinos, Asians, African-Americans, in some places where we're working, Alaskan natives, or Native Americans, or other groups can have protected status under the Voting Rights Act. In addition to those, there are communities of interest that speaks to like socioeconomic factors or how people relate to the city. It's those areas that we want to learn about from the community. The community could describe part of their area as having a component that has to do with race or ethnicity. You know, like we're working in some where people come forward, they'll say, this is Cambodia Town community. But we want to make sure that as we're drawing districts and looking at these communities of interest, that we're looking at them as a part of what their community of interest is and what binds them together, not just their race or ethnicity. So we have to be careful about how we use that. And we will lean on your legal counsel when those kind of questions come up. Types of communities of interest. It could be a downtown historic area. It could be a area with a lot of students, or area with senior housing, or other kinds of things like that. So communities of interest are really key, and that's one of the reasons we're doing, the outreach that we're doing. When you ask someone to tell you about their community of interest, there's a few kind of checkboxes you want to get at. One is that the community has a shared culture, some kind of characteristic or a bond. Another is that they are drawable on a map. So if an area is all left-handed people, that's not really something you can draw on a map. And the third is that we want to see the relationship between the community and the city. Because the idea is, you're drawing districts for communities of interest to ensure that they have fair representation in a district. And so when you're asked, when they're saying we're a community of interest, you want to know what is their representation issue that they need to be justifying that they're in a district in order to empower themselves. So the last one here is following existing boundaries. So if there's existing municipal boundaries or neighborhood lines, those kind of things, that's really a key, critical component of all of this. Starting in this last, in 2020, for this redistricting cycle, there's these additional criteria in process under the Fair Maps Act that we recommend that you use, including that you don't use incumbents or candidates as a community of interest. People ask me, well, what are we going to do about incumbents and how that works? Well, there's all these criteria that are ranked, and the only place it says incumbents or candidates is a place where it says they can't be used as a community of interest. So we'll draw maps without that as a, as an element of the process. And we'll also ensure that when we draw maps, we're not doing it to advantage or disadvantage a political party, which honestly, isn't something we have seen in local government, outside of a few rare examples. Now, the public can have input in a few different ways. One of the simplest ways is to fill out a community of interest form or attend a hearing. And we even have a mapping software we can show you. The online mapping tools are up. What we'd like to get from the community, and I can show you some examples of these, are maps of communities of interest. That means mapping that area that is what you believe is your community and should be protected in a district. We will, as soon as the data's up, September 20th, I think, is when we're getting the final data, have the ability for you to draw actual full district plans as well. Districter is the software that we're using. And it is a very easy, lightweight tool, actually kind of fun to use for the line drawing process and also for drawing communities of interest. Right now, we already have extensive outreach. Forty-seven email submissions, 51 handwritten maps, eight hand-drawn map submissions, and 10 Districter submissions. The themes that we've seen, it are very common to see keeping neighborhoods together, but also collections of neighborhoods. Sometimes we talk about making sure neighborhoods isn't divided. And sometimes we talk about making sure the neighborhoods are paired with other neighborhoods that share communities of interest. So that has been most of what we've seen in terms of submissions. And here's a couple examples. We just randomly selected three. So this wasn't to predispose you towards one particular community of interest testimony, but just to give some examples. This person drew three different neighborhoods and then described this area as a neighborhood of homes and apartments, then Bay Meadows, and that they have issues with regard to traffic. That's, that, this slide checks all three of those boxes. A community, named it, kind of identified it, footprint, you see a map, and then the issue that binds them together and makes them important in the redistricting. Another submitter just put, you know, the map and in their name. And then somebody else just drew the North Central and Central neighborhoods and identified those on the map for the, for the city. The hearings that you're having are virtual hearings like this one, and then in-person community workshops. And we have those coming up on October 2nd. And so at 9:30 at the Congregational Church in San Mateo, and then at 2:00 PM at the Senior Center. And then there is this website that is a resource for all of anything you might need with regard to the redistricting process. The city will have information on all upcoming hearings, the mapping tool, the community of interest form, a way to contact the city, to send an email. And then I believe we'll have links to all of the hearings and any videos and presentations for the process. So it's really kind of a one-stop shopping. And under the Fair Maps Act, the city will be maintaining this website for a decade. So this will be a place for the public to go at any time to see what was the result of this redistricting process or redistricting process under the CBRA. And with that, I am happy to answer a couple of questions. And then Chris is here as well to help out with any follow-up questions.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Councilmember Lee, has her hand up. Rachel, hand up.
Hi, Paul. I was reading through some of the, the community input emails. And a couple of times, I saw a question come up and a preference for not being, not having neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods grouped together with commercial areas. And I wanted to hear from you, what are some best practices? And if we have to have all of the boundaries being, you know, contiguous and adjacent, how, how does that, how does that work in terms of incorporating and factoring in sort of proportional commercial areas to, to the different district maps?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question. It's a great example of the kind of questions that you'll have. Oftentimes, there are issues with like a business district or something, even if it has zero population in that census block or that area has very little or no population. There will be situations where some community might say, we want to have that in our district. And other ones who will say, we don't want to have that in our district. And, and I think you should be listening to all that input. And it kind of gets all put into the mix is how you're making decisions. Now, this, a couple of things about this. One is that the state law does identify communities of interest and say that they should be placed in single districts for the purposes of maximizing their representative and political power. So if somebody were to say, there's a sports arena in the middle of our town, and we want all five districts to touch that sports arena, that would not be something that would be a best practice in redistricting. Because the idea in redistricting would be to allow for a community that is affected by that arena or whatever to be placed in one district. Another thing to think about, and I don't know this exact testimony, so I'm not trying to bias or take a side in this. But another thing to think about is that the objects in redistricting, like a shopping center or, or a facility of some kind, often have two very polarized types of attributes. You might have one community that says, this is a great asset in the city. We want to have it grow and expand. And we want to have this in our district because we want to make sure that this is thriving. It's important to us. You might have another community that comes forward and says, this is a nuisance to us. We have, you know, traffic. We have noise. We have, you know, if it's a sports arena, we've got drunk people walking around the neighborhood after games. And so both of those communities might have important needs associated with that amenity. And for some people, it's a, it's a positive, and for some people, it's a negative. And it's important in your redistricting process to think about those places within those contexts and, and understanding how drawing that community into a district or drawing that amenity into a district can have different policy implications, if that makes sense. And I think with that, I'll let Chris answer some questions, and I'll be back as soon as I can. Is that okay? Thanks.
Okay, do we have any questions for Chris? All right, I'm not seeing any hands raised. So we will open things up for public comment, so we can hear from the public. So now's the time, if you're interested in commenting on any of this you're hearing tonight, please raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, the first hand raised is Rich Hedges.
Okay, before, before we just start, I just want to make sure that, that anybody who wants to speak, raise their hands now so we can just make sure we allocate enough time for everybody. So please don't kind of like wait till the last minute. Okay, great. Sorry about that, Rich. Go ahead.
No problem, Mayor Rodriguez. You do a great job, so clarifying everything. Well, first, I want to suggest that we increase the number of city council seats to six with an at-large mayor. Now, what is my reasoning for this? I believe it will be easier to fit- I believe it will be easier to fit neighborhoods with common problems and common cultures into districts with, with easier if we have more city council seats. For the mayor at large, we need someone who answers to all the voters and will have an ongoing view from year to year for a four-year term of what the needs of the entire city are. They will help bind the city together. We have seen examples of how district elections can divide a community. We don't have to look too far north or east to find an example, and at-large mayor would help to heal splits in the city council. Having said that, the east side will be harder because of natural and man-made dividing lines. However, I believe the area I live in fits nicely with several other neighborhoods to make up a district. These neighborhoods include the neighborhoods of Mariners Island, Edgewood Isle, Los Prados, West Shore, and Parkside. I am suggesting a district that takes in our most urgent needs, flood control, rising bay waters, flood insurance, and dredging with citywide recreation with the lagoon. These items are of common interest to all of our homes on the Marina Lagoon and the east side of Highway 101. The lagoon touches all of these neighborhoods. Some might say that Highway 92 is a dividing line, and I want to stress, it is not. But let me stress why it is not. That Highway 92 goes over all of those neighborhoods, as a matter of fact, and all of these neighborhoods are connected by the same streets and has the same community of interest between communities regarding flood control, rising waters, flood insurance, dredging, and citywide recreation. It is racially mixed and have nearly similar income levels. I hope you will consider this as my request. Many in my neighborhood have expressed the same views, and I would be happy to answer any questions to any of the city council members. I will make it easy for you to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karine Suraf.
Good evening. I basically have some, just a couple of questions regarding the redistricting. Yeah, anyway, will the rules encourage, promote diversity in the way that where an elected official has to be living in the same district they represent? So I, I'm thinking the answer to that is yes, but I, I never heard that in, when the rules or the parameters were, were, were described. And once the districts are drafted, what will cause it to change in the future? What, what event will cause it to change? And I, I totally believe in district elections. I have been for the last decade or so, so I think this is a good thing because redistrict, redistricting or district elections will cause more, I don't know, it'll, it'll be more, address more accountability from our public officials. So, and that's, that's what we want to promote through this whole process is diversity and encourage and promote that diversity in the, in the city. Because in the past, we've always had our representatives coming from Westwood Knolls, Baywood Aragon area, Hayward, Hayward Park, and, you know, just, it's, it's been all, always that way since I can remember growing up in the seventies. So anyway, I, I thank you for this opportunity, and if you can answer those questions, I would be very appreciative. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Nash.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and city council members, and thank you, redistricting partners, for your presentation. As Patrice said, my name is Lisa Diaz-Nash. I am on the city, the San Mateo Library Board, but I'm speaking for myself this evening. I support maintaining five districts and an annual rotating mayor system as part of San Mateo's transition to district elections. We don't have the time to make changes to this system thoughtfully. Given the compressed timeframe, we have to finish all the district election work by this November. Making changes to the number of districts or the type of mayor would only be possible with a vote by residents to change our city charter. This is not, I hate change on my part. This is, I want to make the important change of transitioning to district elections as successful as possible. In addition, I strongly oppose moving to an elected at-large mayor as it would give this role an outsized influence in our city and the region. This is the absolute opposite of what we're trying to do with district elections, i.e. giving the underrepresented communities a greater say in our political process. A rotating mayor system has encouraged all members of our council to step up to greater roles in the region versus depending on one individual to be the public face for San Mateo. I support keeping the rotating mayor system to continue building civic bench strength in San Mateo and not let an at-large mayor get too powerful or entrenched. Finally, as our city manager has shared, adding an at-large mayor would blur duties between the mayor and city manager and require more work and possibly voter approval to change. In reading the public comments on this issue and listening to past spoken public comments, it seems as if San Mateo resident opinion as given here is overwhelmingly in favor of keeping our existing rotating mayor system. So let's keep our five districts and rotating mayor system focused on getting as much community input as possible and be our district election system responsive to our residents' wishes and easy for them to engage with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Scott Rafferty.
Good evening. I, I just want to pass around a lot of compliments. It's, it's really refreshing to see what an excellent job Ms. Olds and I'm sure Mr. Corbett gets some credit too, and Mr. Asaya for putting together the website in a way that has really published a lot of the written comments and started a conversation. I know it's, it's not easy, you're pioneering it, and you're, so far you're doing a great job on that. Thank you very much. It's also refreshing to hear Paul state things so concisely, because, believe it or not, there are demographers who draw some of the maps he's used as bad examples, and it's, it's good to hear that he's working with you and, and that's grounds for optimism. I was a little bit surprised to hear, you know, how seriously you appear to be taking these organic changes. I hadn't necessarily seen that coming. It's always an interesting discussion in charter cities. It's a bit of an irony, because I think in general law cities, the attorneys generally accept they could do these things as part of the CBRA transition. In charter cities, they accept that they don't have to amend the charter to go to CBRA, that it could just be superseded, but they're always very hesitant to do this without a vote of the people, and that's just the way it works. So I understand that dynamic. It hadn't, it, it's not something I'd anticipated. I've been involved in two cases recently where we've gone to seven, one in a general law city, but it was much larger, and one in a school board, which had some very special circumstances, and it was kind of imposed on them as part of the remedy. I'm not sure that's going to be the case here. And finally, I just want to highlight what has become, in my opinion, a problem for the elementary school district, which is the shoreline area. I'd been very optimistic that it was really going to grow. That was what all the projections were showing, was there was a rapidly growing Latino community. The census data do not bear that out. It actually has had almost no population growth, and the elementary school is tossed in much of Foster City, which I think is a mistake. But you're going to need to look even in your smaller districts at the possibility of having to push across into central, across the freeway, as opposed to going down into Mariners Island, which is a very different demographic and would substantially dilute what, what that district is trying to do. So those are just my thoughts, but all around, I'm really very enthusiastic about how you're approaching this and grateful for all of your efforts. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Hi. Good evening, Council, Honorable Mayor, and staff. So I've long been a proponent of district elections. I think it's really just abundantly clear from election results in other cities that district elections lead to increased diversity, increased equity, and increased accountability. So I'm really glad to see the city moving forward so quickly and diligently here. As to the question of a rotational or, or at-large mayor, honestly, I don't really have a strong opinion on this one. I do think option B, where we'd move to district elections next year and then put the question of an at-large mayor via, via charter amendment to the voters in 2024, makes the most sense. I, I do just want to take a moment, though, and comment on what I think has been some really perplexing fear mongering about the idea of moving to an at-large mayoral system, especially from groups like SMUHA. Many cities in the Bay Area and statewide, cities like Fremont, Sunnyvale, Berkeley, Santa Clara, and Half Moon Bay, and our own county, operate with district elections and directly elected at-large mayors. None of them appear to experience the rancor and infighting and apocalyptic events that SMUHA alleges will occur if we move to the system. I also want to push back on the idea that there is overwhelming opposition to this. I would bet if you polled the citizens of San Mateo, most people wouldn't even know that this is going on, let alone what this change really means. So I, I think making statements like that are frankly a little bit, you know, bizarre, and that we should really just focus right now on mapping the districts, getting, getting everything set up, and then, you know, maybe take time in the next couple of years to assess the option of moving to an at-large mayoral system. So thanks so much for your time, really appreciate it.
Thank you. The last speaker I have is George Derby.
Good evening, all. My name is George, and I have a question about the mechanics of redistricting, redistricting. I live in a neighborhood I refer to as the San Mateo Creek East End neighborhood, because a creek runs through it and we're on the east end of the city. We are undergoing rapid development in this part of town. Some of it's currently underway, some of it is already in the planning process, either approved or very close to approval. These projects are large, and they're going to significantly change the character of the neighborhood. That's one of the reasons, you know, I'd like to make sure that our district is well-represented. But I also have a, a, a very specific kind of technical question, which is, will the future projects be considered when the redistricting occurs? In other words, is it only stuff that's currently in the ground, or are things that are currently planned and we know will be in the ground within a year or two be considered when you do the redistricting process? So I'm not sure who that question is, I should address it to, but I'm throwing it out there.
We will attempt to answer all the questions after public comment is closed.
Mr. Derby, are you done with your comments?
Yes.
Thank you. No more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public comment and first give our staff or redistricting partners a chance to answer some of the questions that were just thrown out, and we can start with that most recent one, if you like.
So I can take that. So I think the Mr. Derby's question really was about using projected growth as part of the registering process. We have to use the statewide databases prisoner reallocated census data to, to draw district lines, but under, with local redistricting, we have a 10% total deviation tool that we can use to either under-populate or over-populate a district based on, from the ideal population. So we can, with council approval and, and recommendation, under-populate areas that we have expected growth and possibly over-populate areas where the, maybe the area's been built out and we don't expect growth to occur. But I think that you can do that. I think the hard part is, it's really hard to know if, if the growth in one area by development is not going to be equivalent to the birth growth or the immigration into an area of another part of the city that's already built out. So it's, it's one thing to look at permits and growth by development, it's another thing to think about births and movement into the city that may, may not be expected.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions that I took from the very beginning. One of them was, do, must the, must the, the council members live in the, in their, live in the district that they're running in? And I believe the answer is definitely yes.
Definitely yes.
For that one. And then the other one is, this one's interesting. Once districts are drafted, what would cause them to change?
The 2030 census? A massive annexation by the city that changes the underlying population and meets the Fair Map Act allowance for a mid-decade registering effort, effort? Or a charter amendment that shifts from the number of districts that you implement through the CBRA conversion?
Great, thank you. Was there any other questions that I missed? Does any, anybody catch any? Okay. All right. So I'll bring it back to council now for any questions we have or just general discussion. Does the staff have any slide or any cheat sheet on what you'd like us to be focused on?
Yes, let me pull that up.
Okay. And while he pulls that up, Councilmember Lee would like to kick things off again.
I, I heard a, a question about what are the powers of, of the mayor? And I think it would be helpful to have that brought into this discussion just to help define what, what exactly the role of the mayor is and what, what the potential for a quote, "outsized" influence would be, given, given how we define the mayorship right now. Drew, do you think you could take that one, or would that be a good one for Prasanna? Or Eric, would you?
I'll, I'll start if that's okay, and then Prasanna can jump in. I, I think that, you know, our, our charter right now defines the, the role of the mayor under the rotational system, and I think that going to a, a directly elected mayor under the council manager form of government wouldn't necessarily change the, the role day-to-day of the mayor. I, I don't, you know, there, there's, there's room for, you know, there's, there can be a directly elected mayor under the council manager form of government. Many, many of the cities that were mentioned by Mr. Grimes in his comments are council manager form of government with a directly elected mayor. I, I think from my perspective, unless council opted to, to change the role of the mayor under, under this system of a directly elected mayor, I don't think there would be much difference from, from the mayor's role now, other than there would be the continuity of, of that person being in place for either two or four years.
So I actually don't have a whole lot to add to that. I think that neatly summarizes the role of the mayor in our, in a system in which you would have an elected mayor as part of a council manager form, form of government. The mayor would be simply directly elected by the voters as opposed to being selected by the remaining council members, but they would be one voting member of the governing body, and as in their current rule, would still be involved in those high-level legislative and policymaking functions, whether directly elected or selected by the remainder of the councils.
Maybe it would also help to share with the public how, what role the mayor has in helping to make assignments for serving as liaison to different bodies regionally, and, and how that is shared across the entire council. and how that is shared across the entire council.
Let me take that one. So this is something, it's kind of a gray area. And I think that we, as this council, has formalized the guidelines that this council wants to go by. And this was something that always kind of comes up because the mayor is supposed to facilitate the process and not necessarily dictate who gets what. But there's definitely, since the mayor is behind the scenes proposing the final draft, there is definitely, can be a lot of influence that could be wielded by that person if they so chose. That was why this year, or maybe it was last year or beginning of this year, I tried to implement a very fair system where you kind of essentially, you kind of put your priorities and everybody would get, hopefully, one of their top two priorities. Because when I was first elected to council, all of the plum positions were kind of held for, or at least that's the way I perceived it, were held for long-serving council members. So the way that we adopted in our guidelines that we voted for, I perceive is a little bit more fair. That being said, I think that there's just a lot of soft power that the mayor has. And I think a lot of that, that I've just now come to realize as serving as mayor, that I think stems from the fact that generally the public believes the mayor position is a strong mayor like that of Oakland or San Francisco or San Jose. And so they just assume that the mayor has a lot more technical power than they do have. And that's kind of another reason why when you have a city manager, council, form of government, that mayor role is a little bit miscategorist often. And that's why I think that, that's another reason why I think that it doesn't make sense to have a separately elected person do that when essentially it's not the CEO of the city, it's the chairman of the board of the city. Do we have any other questions from council or any comments? No one wants to kick things off? So that's it? Go home? Okay, how do we do, staff? All right, I'll go first. You know, I think the main event of this evening is really, well, first was probably to get comments from the public on the districts and really just try to educate the public and us some more whilst we go through this difficult process. But I think that one of the things that we're really looking at, I guess we're looking right here, is the number of districts and how we choose a mayor. And as I mentioned last meeting, you know, I strongly feel that rushing to move to an at-large mayor would be a huge irreversible mistake. It would only further complicate an already extremely complicated process of transitioning to districts, leading to even more voter confusion and potential candidate confusion. It would increase the list of, the risk of potential lawsuits. It would lead to having to spend more taxpayer dollars potentially to put a new charter amendment on the ballot. It would consolidate power into a single position, a position that would be very costly to run for citywide. And by the way, that is something that we're trying to help here. And we give that position, it would give whoever was in that position, especially early on, a huge advantage. And that advantage would most likely go to a current council member here and then ongoing to the incumbent. And I also feel that special interest PAC money would be able to wield even more influence for that newly created position. There are equity concerns I have. Instead of each neighborhood's district having a chance to have their representative serve as mayor, they would be served by a single person who would have an indisputable advantage in election after election for reelection. If we had an at-large mayor back in the 90s, I really wonder whether, I really wonder whether or not a trailblazer like Claire Mack from North Central would have ever gotten a chance to serve as our first African-American mayor. One of the only arguments I hear in favor of an at-large mayor is that it will somehow magically bring a lot of new regional money to our city. And I have serious doubts about that since San Mateo has had a long history of having multiple leaders on the regional stage, helping make sure our city is well-represented. And it was only a couple of years ago that we had Rick Bonilla, Maureen Fresket, and Diane Pappin all in very influential regional board positions. So the argument is now that we want to kind of move away from that dynamic and consolidate power into one position. It just doesn't make sense to me. I think the only prudent and fair path forward is to do what we need to do to satisfy the CVRA requirements. And that is to keep in line with our city charter as closely as possible and focus, as Mr. Grimes said, on getting the five districts right. That is the key here. And to do that, we should keep the rotating mayor. And then after, we have gotten all this behind us. If the community or a council member wants to propose changing our charter to have an out-large mayor or to change the number of districts we have, we could then go through the normal process during the 2022 goal-setting session or whatever and not have this rush process. And that is what, that is how I feel about this and how I feel is the, really the best path that we can accomplish. What we're all trying to do here is successfully move the districts. Okay, now we're done. Councilmember Bothos?
Sure, I want to thank staff. I think that the presentation tonight was excellent. I think that all the work that's gone into where we are now is excellent. We are on a clear path to going to districts, which is what we're required to do. And I feel that we are doing it not only for the right reasons, but in the right way. And so I'm confident that our outcome will be more representative government, which is great. That is the goal. I don't think you can overstate how challenging the position of being on the council is. I've seen during my time on the council, a lot of people come and serve and not realize just how much work goes into it and how many regional boards we're asked to serve on. Our mayor Rodriguez just mentioned how Maureen Fresket and Rick Bonilla and Diane Pappin have all served on these major regional boards. It's really important that San Mateo continue to do that. And it is important in order to bring back to San Mateo the regional dollars that are so important, the federal dollars that are so important. It is, we are the largest city in all of San Mateo County. We sit at the, at the crossroads of the county with 92 and 101. We see all of the traffic that comes in and out of the East Bay through 92. So there are a lot of important reasons why our government matters. It matters a lot. And I've heard from a lot of residents who thought being able to vote for at least two of their council members is a big deal. That they would feel that that is more of a voice and that that individual who serves as the at-large mayor could be the voice during council meetings to say, this is a regional issue that affects all of the districts. And it may have impacts on one district, but I see that there will be more conflict on the council when one district is more impacted than another. And I understand that, and that's okay. So I still see the positive benefits to having an at-large mayor. I don't think that this is the kind of issue where we're going to see lots of residents banging the door down because, as one speaker mentioned, there aren't that many residents of San Mateo who even know that we're having this discussion right now. I don't think that an at-large mayor is the most important thing right now. I think that we are doing so many important things with redistricting and with our general plan. And I have to say that if we, you know, if we continue to have councils like the current council that we have, we're going to be in good hands whether we have an at-large mayor or not. Continuing to make sure that we support individuals who want to serve their city is important. Making sure that we encourage the right people to serve in these roles is important. And I think that Drew and Patrice and Prasanna and our whole staff are moving in the right direction. So I appreciate what we're doing. For my two cents, I think an at-large mayor could benefit the city, could benefit the city in multiple ways. And there are people out there who want to see it as well. I don't know that, I don't know that we're going to decide one way or the other. But those are my two cents. And I really appreciate staff and our consultants for all of the positive work that's gone into tonight's presentation. Thank you so much.
I can go next, Mr. Mayor.
Please, Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
So, like I said at the end of the last meeting, I still am really looking forward to receiving the new census data, to seeing, actually, I think, much more public input. I really hope to see much more public input regarding the possible districts that could be drawn in the city. On the question of the number of districts, I believe that when I look at census data and the other information that we collect regarding five, seven, or I don't think nine districts would be appropriate. But I do think it's important to consider that we do have diverse, separate, and distinct areas in the city. And depending on how all the communities of interest shake out, we may end up with more than five. So if we end up with more than five, it depends on how much more than five, whether we go to seven, I think, how we decide to work with the information and the communities that are involved. So I'm keeping a very open mind with regard to that. The question of an at-large elected mayor for me is still difficult because I've worked in cities, large cities, that have had strong elected mayors. And I realize that those were strong mayors. And I think that's an important distinction. Here in San Mateo, we've never had a strong mayor and council form of government. We've always had what we have, which is the council and manager form of government, which I think works well here. I think that even if we were to have an elected mayor, we likely, the council, would not be so inclined to change to the strong mayor and council form of government because what we have works. And, but many things depend on when we change to the districts and we have an election and who runs for office and who wins. We could well be seeing many different and varying opinions on these questions. So I'm here with an open mind. I'm here to learn. I'm listening very carefully to the public and to my colleagues here on the council tonight. I look forward to proceeding with this process because I find it really ultimately very interesting. Anything that could bring better governance and better representation, mostly better representation, I think, to members of communities which have distinct interests that are, you know, make them their own communities, I think could be a benefit. Because historically, I think many communities have gone some long times in San Mateo without representation. And I want to add also that council members do a lot of work, as Councilmember Bothos referred to, and I think the mayor referred to, too. There are a lot of assignments out there. A lot of it is very important work. It's county-wide, it's Bay Area-wide, it's statewide. I do a lot of that work because I have chosen to because I actually feel quite compelled to deal with these larger issues regarding regional outcomes, such as dealing with renewable energy and climate change, solid waste management, traffic congestion, housing, and climate change at large, not just here in San Mateo County. But how can we treat and change the way we do housing and transportation and provide better outcomes in terms of cutting greenhouse gas emissions and reducing vehicle miles traveled by computers? These are all huge issues that we all need to think about. And so when we're thinking about candidates for these districts, I hope we consider those issues, too. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Councilmember Lee?
Well, I really appreciate all the very considerate comments from our council already. And I think that the pros and cons have been laid out very well in terms of the potential change to our governance structure. Personally, my position hasn't really changed in terms of, I strongly favor keeping five members on council. And I don't think that adding additional seats is warranted by the size of our city, the population of our city. And I personally find that the relationship, access, and capacity of our city manager and city attorney that I have at this point with five council members, it works very well. And I worry that, you know, that that would be compromised with the addition of additional, with the addition of more council members and stretch our staff a bit thinner. And so that's something that weighs on me in terms of the consideration of that relationship between council members and city staff. And I think that I am open to considering a directly elected mayor, but I am very hesitant for all the reasons that our current mayor Rodriguez laid out and also the logistical and litigation risks or the logistical complications and the litigation risks for implementation. My inclination would be to learn more. I feel like this is such a significant change to the structure. And while the staff has done such an excellent job doing outreach in a constrained timeframe and getting, I think, some very valuable feedback for us to, to even contemplate putting something so significant on the ballot, I personally would really want to see polling. If there's, if a poll were done and it showed that I, you know, that any change to the number of seats or a change to the rotational mayor structure would be, you know, like, would be insurmountable by the voters, then I think that we would know earlier and it would help us to really have confidence that the electorate has weighed in and that they've considered this. And so I feel like there's some interim steps that we could take to understand with statistically valid information what this change, what the appetite for such a change could be. um what what this change, what the appetite for such a change could be. Um and um and I think that it would be helpful to wait um to lay out some of the considerations, the benefits and the challenges to that structure. Um and so I my question would be, you know, would, is there a scenario where we could incorporate or um or plan for polling um i- with our timeframe allow for that? Um, how would that be folded into the different scenarios? Um, so so that's something I think I would I would like to have a little bit more information on.
I don't, were you expecting to get that information now, or are you just saying in the future?
Well, I think, I mean, Prisana, if you don't mind, um if if you could help, um if you there's, if you have an answer, an idea of how polling could be incorporated into some of the scenarios in terms of implementation, um that would be helpful.
Well, what I'll say is that, you know, the the third public hearing, just turning back to the CVRA compliance implementation, the third public hearing is scheduled, I believe, for September thirtieth. And um, you know, the the process contemplates five public hearings and then adoption of an ordinance. So really, s- what what staff and the report was seeking was some direction uh tonight as to, you know, the number of districts. Now, the council could ask for for options to return to council um at the third public hearing, preferably no more than two options with regard to, you know, the number of districts, directly elected mayor, so that maps could be drawn and then uh vetted through a public process. Now, as the question of of polling, um, I'm not sure of the timing of how long it takes to uh prepare and deploy and get responses to a poll and how that would fit into the process. Um but just what I can tell you is that the process, I I would not recommend extending the process for CVRA implementation in any way since we're we're following that process to avoid um future legal risks, I'll say. You see, the city manager has his hand up as well.
Sorry, um just just to add on to that, um I think that the scenario, Councilmember Lee, that that you're posing could could be workable under the the option where we go to the interim step of implementing the um, you know, sort of the quote-unquote safest uh option, which is five council members rotating mayor and then utilizing the strategic planning process to express interest in this and interest in doing what you're talking about, which is polling for the consideration of a future charter amendment that could then implement either additional council members or a um directly elected mayor in the in the future, once we've gotten compliance with the initial CVRA um violation accusation.
All right, does that conclude your comments, Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else want to weigh in on this?
I guess that leaves it to me. Um, so uh, let me just talk a little bit. Um, you know, I've spent a lot of time reflecting on the impacts of the change to our election process from at-large to district elections and the concept of an at-large mayor. Let me take the the at-large mayor part first. You know, I get, I get it that one could certainly look at a lot, at-large mayor and perhaps, you know, having more of a collective voice of leadership um and, you know, could even combat some of the balkanization that comes from district elections, um where one, you may have one council member that's only thinking about their own district. Um, the mayor-at-large format that we're considering uh is not, um however, the the strong, you know, sort of mayor model where we can create an executive branch that's run by the mayor on behalf of the whole city like you see in San Jose and San Francisco. The model we're considering is where the mayor would remain a voting member of the legislative body, which is our city council. And I I, you know, as I said, spent a lot of time kind of contemplating this and and really comes back to, you know, what are my views of this legislative body? Um, and they come, I think I come at it from a, you know, fairly egalitarian perspective. And, you know, I I I kind of come, you know, after thinking long and hard about it. For me, I kind of think like it should be, the council should be made up of members who are, you know, all created equal, if you will. And when I look at how do you achieve that equality, it really is for all the voting members of the council to have been elected from essentially the same-sized pool of people. Um, so it's, I mean, for me, I I just kind of come at it from this egalitarian perspective. That if if the mayor is going to be some, a person that um continues to be a part of this legislative body as opposed to running and and being a part of the an executive branch, as it were, in our city. Um, in my gut, I feel like each member should be created equally and we should try to keep this legislative body as democratic as possible. So that's kind of where where I'm coming at it. Um, and I I don't know that if we took it up later, after we did sort of, uh, you know, as we've referred to, the the sort of safe route, I I'm not sure that I myself would have a change of opinion. Um, uh, but that's kind of, so that's where I am at this point. But I really feel like this body should be comprised of um uh members that, as I said, are all sort of created equal. Um, so anyway, that's where I come up on that. As for the number of council members, um, you know, I I've reviewed the public input that's been provided so far and um, you know, I I kind of, and I I know I say, I I, you know, having just ran last year, um, you know, I spent a lot of time hitting the streets in the city and um it's big. And there's a lot of, you know, different neighborhoods with different communities and interests, certainly. So I think it's kind of worth exploring, you know, the sample of of maps that might be based on either five uh members or seven members. And um I know that we could, you know, maybe do it where we um could uh put something to the voters and if if it didn't pass, uh correct me, I I want to make sure I understand this, if it didn't pass in June, it say, let's say, okay, without, okay, seven might look better than five when you look at the map. And we decide, okay, well, let's take this um to uh the voters to change the charter. It doesn't pass. Um, we could have a backup option, that is, the five members. And um we go forward with having an election, you know, the ordinance will be in place and we'll have an election in November that is with five different districts. Um, so that's kind of where I'm coming with on how we could logistically perhaps consider um whether or not there should be some additional uh districts. That's where I'm coming from. Maybe somebody can answer me. It looks like Prisana, Chris.
Prisana.
Oh, yes, thank you. So I want to be clear on the charter amendment options. So uh a charter amendment needs to be put before the voters at a statewide primary or general or a regular general municipal election, not a special election. So what that means is the soonest that really it could go to the voters is June of twenty twenty-two. However, the county needs a fair amount of lead time in order to help administer the election. And the June of twenty twenty-two is too close to the November twenty twenty-two election in order for a charter amendment, you know, to be implemented that quickly. So then what the, I'm sorry, did somebody have a question? Did I hear? No, okay. So then what that would mean is um if the council wanted to have, say, seven seats, uh then that could be considered um at the November twenty twenty or at at an election in twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-two, because again, it has to be a statewide primary or general election or general municipal election.
I guess I I I don't understand why it is that if a charter amendment passes in June, you couldn't have an election in November. And or the opposite, if you, if it didn't pass and you had a a, you know, fallback setup, you couldn't go forward in November. Uh, you know, when you say it's hard for the clerk's office or the county rec- or the county clerk's office, I'm not sure um exactly what I understand by that.
Yeah, I I think, and maybe perhaps if she's on the phone, she can speak to this as well, but that the county needs a certain amount of of lead time in order to uh and and to have the actual, you know, boundaries in order to help administer the city's election in in November. And there's also a practical consideration too. I mean, as as candidates are running, um, they would want to know, you know, what seat they're running for. And if they are, if that decision is put off until June of twenty twenty-two, then it can create a, practically speaking, a difficult situation for candidates that they don't know what seat they're running for until mid-year. But that's, the the primary issue is really um not having enough time uh to implement a charter amendment for November of twenty twenty-two if the charter amendment is only in June.
And I'm happy to weigh in on, um, I spoke with County Elections Department. The deadline for the shape files for any districts to be implemented for a November election have to be received by May twelfth, which is before the June election. I asked them if there's any negotiation or flexibility with that date, and they said, no, they can't because there's so many cities redistricting as well as um several cities in the in San Mateo County districting right now. They just don't have the capacity to have wiggle room with that date of May twelfth.
Can I ask you a question, Councilmember Patton? Um, because a lot of your 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 thoughts on the district um resonated with me uh or on the number of districts, I should say, and and along with Deputy Mayor Bonilla's uh comments. And because I I too get the general sense down the road that um like when we start splicing and dicing our maps, um that the seven is going to be a fairer way to do it. Um, but I I still, all the concerns that I had about rushing the process uh to to seven or or rushing the process for an at-large mayor, it they hold for me as well as going to to seven. So I'm wondering if we, if if one to kind of compromise could be, we instruct staff to look at five districts and seven district scenarios while we're just in the studying phase. We 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 move on to five, but we start, we start looking at options later down the road, which is kind of the interim step anyway. Um, and that way, we were not rushing things, we are being very methodical and we're we're able to see all of our options. And another plus of that, although I mean, I'm obviously against, is if if we were looking at that, that would be a way if we so chose to move to an at-large mayor later on, it's a lot easier to go to five to seven with an, or to six with an at-large mayor versus uh not. So uh to me, that's that's seems, I'm, I mean, to me, it's the obvious path forward, but um that's that's just me. I'm just.
Mr. Mayor, I think I stated basically the same thing when I was speaking, that, you know, I think we should start with five, but that, you know, the data, the census information may provoke us to look at seven. Um, and I'm not even thinking about the difficulties that are being discussed with the county elections office and all that stuff. I'm simply looking for what I think is the best outcome for San Mateo.
Okay, so I stole Deputy Mayor Rick's, uh Deputy Mayor Bonilla's, it was good, good one.
I'm just saying that I concur with that thinking.
Any thoughts on that? Anybody else?
Well, it is to have uh consider both five districts and seven districts as we move forward in this process and have a sort of a backup map for after November twenty twenty-four, twenty-two, excuse me.
Well, I I don't see it as a backup. I see it as there's really, this is my my views, obviously. I see there's really only one uh path forward that's that that makes it um not confusing for the voters and candidates, and that's going to five this next uh this next round. That that to me is, I just think if we we start to move away from that, we're going to start get, we're creating a lot of complications. But in this process, we're, we need to tell staff how, like, what to, what sample maps to show us. So um I was following the the school districts uh uh process pretty closely, and they asked, for example, to see five and seven. And and so that was just helpful to see what it looks like because we are going to get some communities that feel they should be um grouped with certain communities, but we're not going to be able to just because of the math. And so we'll be able to see it with the understanding that that is just kind of like a coming attraction later on if we decide to go that way, but it's really not a backup. It's not because that would be really logistically hard and costly.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe they had the same demography. Is that correct?
I believe so as well.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I think this is not an impossible request to to get that additional information.
Maybe maybe they could ju- jump in and the only thing I would be worried about is um taking away from getting the five right. Like, like, could uh Mr. Mitchell, could you give us an example of like what we can expect, like how many different maps we would see, whether if we focused just on five or if we looked at seven as well?
Yeah, so um the amount of maps you might receive really varies greatly by cities um and school districts and other agencies, depending on how active the community gets in it. Um, we've seen some agencies get two or three maps, some agencies, we have one, it's a hundred right now. Um, so, you know, it it really can vary. The having two potential mapping scenarios is something else that we've seen, the city of Napa in their last redistricting. Uh, they did take the affirmative step that they wanted to have four districts with an at-large mayor. I'm not trying to suggest that's the way you should go, but uh they took that decision, but then there were the members of the public that were still submitting five district plans. So we had this situation where roughly half of our completed plans were plans that had a five district scenario, which does present different opportunities and challenges potentially in the line drawing process when you're looking at different mapping scenarios. So um, you know, the having clarity for the public is probably advantageous because learning about the redistricting process in of itself is already a little bit complex. Learning about it and then being asked to kind of answer two questions um can be uh more challenging to that input. Um, but, you know, really, it is a decision that once you you tell us what decision you've made that we will be able to facilitate the line drawing process with that. We um, I don't think we're doing the the other district that was mentioned, um but we have had scenarios where we've done multiple plans with, you know, like a seven district community college board or a or a five district community college board. Um, and uh it is just, I mean, it's a little bit more work, but it it is something that if that was also the decision of the city, that we would obviously able to provide. Um, we really are here to facilitate the line drawing process, make sure that you and your staff get the support you need in the process. We aren't here to really weigh in on a decision that really ultimately like this is yours.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding your answer. So if we if we chose to look at seven as well in this process, it wouldn't um diminish the the views of the options we would have for for five?
So if, as an example, an agency is not able to conclude that they want five or seven and they kind of punt that decision to the future somehow, then we have been in positions in the past where we're kind of having to draw, given both scenarios. Like I said, it does make it, I think, more confusing for the public. Um, it does pose challenges, but obviously, from a technical perspective, it's not, it's not impossible. Um, I think that it's generally better to have some clarity, though, when you're in the process because redistricting itself can be confusing.
Great, thank you. Uh, uh, Councilmember Gothos.
So when is the next districting meeting? Um, because I heard the question from Councilmember Lee about um can we get polling to see whether the public at large in San Mateo wants uh an at-large mayor or understands and sees the benefit of an at-large mayor? And that polling could be significant and could really um impact the decision. Is that feasible? Did anybody answer that question? Maybe I missed it.
I can answer that question. Uh, the, the next public hearing is on September thirtieth. Um, there's, there's no way that we could do any sort of statistically valid sampling or polling between now and then.
You, you sound torn. You, you, it sounds like you're not sure about.
I'm, I'm torn on many things, but this is not one of them.
Um, okay.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Thanks. I, I just want to say that, you know, the more I think about this and listening to what our demographer said and, and uh, understanding that our demographer has a lot of experience in doing this, um, and considering the added complexity and difficulties this, this could bring, um, I think I might be in favor of doing something that's not going to cause us to, to have difficulties around having to amend the charter, um, and simplify it because it's tough enough as it is. It's already a difficult thing. It's hard for a lot of people to comprehend and get their heads around, but it's also very important. So we need to focus on getting it right. And I think right now, maybe I, I should just revise my thinking and focus on five districts with an, at, uh, uh, with a rotating mayor. Okay? I think that, that seems to be what I've heard most of in, in terms of, of public comment, although I don't think I've heard enough public comment really. But yeah, that coupled with, like I said, I have to see, you know, census and demographic information. But I am in favor, I think, at this point of keeping it simple somewhat. So that's a revision for me.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lee.
I'm glad to hear Council, uh, Deputy Mayor, um, Bonilla, um, uh, kind of evolve your thinking and I, I threw this conversation I have as well in hearing um, Mr. Mitchell's concern about adding can, uh, potential confusion um, and uh, to the process for the public, um, potentially getting um, getting different levels of input about different options or an, or the wrong input about the options that we're considering. All, all those factors for me are um, weigh very heavily um, in, in, uh, I think uh, in, you know, subverting the, the intent and, um, and the process of, of making this as um, as fair and democratic and accessible as possible. So I, I, I have really serious concerns about adding complexity um, with uh, you know, adding different seats as, as Mayor Rodriguez stated, um, there, all the concerns that we have logistically in terms of implementation and, um, and term, and our litigation exposure, um, or liability exposure, all of those things are um, are equal, whether we go from five to seven, um, or six, or an at-large mayor. So um, so they should be weighted equally. And so I, you know, I'm landing um, very clearly in this conversation on, um, moving forward with five and a rotating, five council members and a rotating mayor. I think this was a really productive conversation. Um, and, and I, I also really take to heart um, Councilmember Papin's um, point about having um, us all created equal. I, I really like that, the way that you phrase that. And, and I think that that really matters um, a lot in terms of um, the, the dynamic of having a, a collaborative um, and, and healthy council that, that works well together. And so I, I really, I appreciate that perspective a lot. Um, I, I do, I, I am, I haven't completely given up on the idea of potentially considering um, an at-large mayor one day. Um, and I think for me, uh, the first step would be polling or, or maybe revisiting this at a, you know, um, a future council goal-setting session. Um, or maybe we wait until the next, um, you know, the, the next census data comes out in ten years. Um, but I, I think it's an, I think it's, for me, the process would be, how do we make sure that we engage the public and get their perspective um, as early as possible through polling and, and have statistically valid data to work with. So, so that would be, you know, um, that would be my, my approach if we were to revisit this. But I, I don't see that as a high priority. I think um, where we need to focus is getting this right and having um, as, you know, many strong options for a five, a council um, seat, or a five-seat council is um, is where I think we'll get the, the most bang for our buck.
Okay. I, I'd like to just jump in and say that I 100% concur with Deputy Mayor Bonilla and Councilmember Lee on their past comments. Um, that's where I've, I've shifted to as well. Uh, Deputy Mayor Bonilla's hand was up next.
Yeah, oh, thank you. I didn't realize it was still up, but let me add this comment, okay? Regarding what the mayor does, um, I was the mayor in twenty eighteen, which was the year when we needed to get help from FEMA in Washington DC for money. We, we received a special loan known as a water infrastructure funding, WIFIA is the name of the loan. And I went there along with, I believe, uh, Councilmember Papin and then at the time, uh, I was the mayor, I think Maureen Fresket may have come along. But anyway, we were there with our consultants, we met with the EPA, we also went and met with um, the Federal Railroad Administration. We did get that funding. We got two hundred and seventy-five million for the wastewater treatment plant project. And the very next year, twenty nineteen, when Maureen was the mayor, we got an additional seventy-five million uh, for more sewer work. We also, from the railroad, uh, Federal Railroad Administration, got a commitment to help with our quiet zones, um, and the construction we need downtown. So um, for the Caltrain line. So I mean, you don't have to be a strong mayor or an elected mayor to be able to do that. You just have to have a team that works together and knows how to go there and lobby for our interests with not only the help of our legislators, but with those federal representatives. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Goltos.
So I really appreciate the comments of my colleagues and staff. And I think that the things that are weighing on me most heavily, um, is the timeline that we have created. We've created a very difficult timeline. We are asking staff to do so much. Um, and this may be a bridge too far to try to consider changes to the, to the role of the mayor or the way that the mayor's elected. We, we are already making a tremendous amount of change and there's a lot of merit to making sure that residents are not confused. Uh, there's a lot of merit to uh, trying to su- support staff and set them up for success. And for those reasons, I think my colleagues have convinced me that, uh, we can only do so much and um, and having a council made up of five members and a rotating mayor, uh, but albeit moving to district elections is a lot of change for the next uh, twelve months. And, and that's probably all that we can handle. So um, I understand. And uh, and I want to su- support staff and set them up for success and set up all of us in this process of, of district elections. So that's probably the best, best idea at this point.
All right. Um, are there any other final comments or thoughts from, thoughts from staff that we can clarify anything? Looks like we're pretty clear to me. Uh, Councilmember Papin.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in at the end here. Um, that I, I, I concur, as Councilmember Goltos put it, we are up against a very tight timeframe and our priorities should be on getting it done right and not confusing the public and getting our, our staff, um, you know, making it so that this can be achieved in, in a um, you know, a way that's equitable and um, efficient. And um, that's it. So I think we'll, we'll go with the, you know, exploring the five at this point and maps that relate to five districts.
Okay, staff and redistricting partners, how did we do? Do, could we need to do anything else? Comment on any other areas?
No, I think, I think we have what we need to move forward.
Okay. Well, I, I want to thank everyone, especially my colleagues, um, for just such a thoughtful discussion. I think that this is how councils are supposed to come to decisions and, and work together. And um, I think that uh, just the way we, we, we talked these through really kind of demonstrated the San Mateo way. And I want to thank you. I, I totally appreciate it. And thank you to staff and redistricting partners for all the hard work uh, you did on this and moving us forward. And we were going to get there and it's going to be um, better, better system than we had before. So thank you, everyone. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Please stay safe.
Thank you. Good night.